Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I am the Council Vice President for the City of Minneapolis. And as sometimes we do, we have an honorary resolution we'd like to present before starting our formal council meeting. And this honorary resolution is honoring the Aliveness Project. And I'd like to invite all of our guests to come up from the Aliveness Project. And I'm joined here by Councilmember Jacob Frye as we present this resolution. So I just want to say a couple of words about the Aliveness Project. Aliveness Project, celebrating 30 years, is no small feat. It is a tremendous accomplishment. And this is an incredible organization that is in the 8th Ward of Minneapolis. It actually has moved from its former longtime home to a new home. So we're also celebrating now a couple of years of being in a beautiful new location that can even better serve those who rely on the Aliveness Project. The Aliveness Project works to establish community and services for people living with HIV/AIDS. It's really a tremendously unique organization that not only provides services such as a food shelf, certain healthcare services, and beautiful holiday baskets and other things that help people establish their lives and feel connection, but it's just an amazing community center. It serves people from all over the state of Minnesota, certainly strongly serving the metropolitan region, not just the city of Minneapolis. And they are going to celebrate their 30th anniversary at a location in the 3rd Ward, represented by Jacob Frye. So I'd like to go ahead and read this honorary resolution honoring the Aliveness Project on its 30th anniversary. Whereas the Aliveness Project was founded by a group of people living with HIV/AIDS in 1985 and has served the local HIV/AIDS community for 30 years, and whereas over 1,700 individuals benefit from the services of the Aliveness Project, representing 1 in 4 Minneapolitans living with HIV/AIDS, and whereas the Aliveness Project prepares and serves over 34,000 meals each year and distributes over 70 tons of food shelf items, and whereas each holiday season, over 701 baskets are distributed to members representing over 1,500 people, including more than 428 children, and whereas nearly 3,000 sessions of acupuncture, massage, shiatsu, and other complementary therapeutic treatments are provided annually, and whereas the Aliveness Project provides educational workshops, counseling, and support groups, and every year, more than 1,800 people volunteer at over 31,000 hours to help with the ongoing work at the Aliveness Project. And whereas Tuesday, October 13th, is Aliveness Project's 30th anniversary, and we honor their hard work on behalf of the people of their community and the city of Minneapolis, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Minneapolis does hereby declare Tuesday, October 13th, 2015, to be the Aliveness Project Day in honor of its 30 years of outstanding contributions to the city of Minneapolis. And that deserves some applause.[226.23][226.23][applause] The Aliveness Project has such an amazing staff, dedicated board, amazing volunteers, and dedicated members. And I want to turn things over to Tim Marburger, who's here representing the Aliveness Project, to introduce all the guests that are with him and say a few words.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Jacob, for this great honor. We really appreciate it because, as you said, Aliveness Project has been around for 30 years, and we see the stories every day. With my colleagues here, I brought Lori, our Director of Member Services; Joe is the President of our Board; Jeff is the President of our Membership Advisory Committee. And we just want to say thanks to the support that you have given us, the city has given us. I know Barbara has been an ambassador for our Dining Out for Life numerous years. So we have a long relationship, and so we're really grateful for that. The people we see every day, everyone from the five-year-old client to our 84-year-old oldest client, people that we've gotten to know, see, who hear their stories of dealing with the poverty that we have to deal with, they have to deal with, and the stigma, because there's still so much stigma, especially in our ethnic communities of the African born, African-American, and Latino communities. And so it continues to be a challenge, and people are scared to get the help. But when they come into Aliveness Project, we see the weight lifted off of their shoulders. It's a safe place for them to be. It's a safe place to get a meal, to hear and talk with other people about what's going on. Who's that doctor you see? What kind of medication are you doing? I have this back problem. What should I do? So it's a really wonderful place. If you haven't been there, as Elizabeth mentioned, we moved to 38th and Nicollet a couple of years ago. It seems like about 20 years now. But it's been a wonderful experience for us. It's an accessible place so that we're able to see more people coming in the building now. And so if you haven't been involved, if you would like to learn more, or if you would like to celebrate with us, we have our celebration next Tuesday at the Minneapolis Event Center in Jacob's area. Come party with us. I hope the two of you can at least show up for a bit, and I'll buy you a Coke.[380.41][380.41][laughter] Not sure what the guidelines are. But thank you so much for this honor, and thank you for honoring the work that we do and for the people who don't have a voice, and allowing us to come and speak with and for them.
Thank you, Tim.[397.12][397.12][applause]
Maybe get closer without the mic in it.[405.12][405.12][laughter]
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you so much.
I know.
I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council to Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have all members present this morning. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to move to amend the agenda to include the Aliveness Project resolution under Order of Resolutions.
Councilmember Glidden has moved to amend the agenda to include the resolution that is in front of you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then on the adoption of the agenda as amended, any discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 25th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to the proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to the proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first committee to report is the Claims Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Claims Committee is bringing forward five items for approval this morning. I'll note all items other than item number four are motions to deny. Item number four is authorizing a payment to Muriel Jorvig. With that, I'll open, I'll move all items one through five.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Claims Committee report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Committee of the Whole. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. There's one item, which is approving a letter of support for Expo 2023, and I'll move approval.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Community Development Regulatory Services. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward seven items for approval this morning. Items one, two, and three are land sales. Item four is the licensing consumer services agenda. Items five, item five is a license settlement conference. Six is a rental dwelling licensure reinstatement. And item seven is the University Avenue Innovation District redevelopment. I'm going to pull that item for amendment and move items one through six for approval.
Councilmember Goodman has moved items one, pulled, let's see, items one through...
Six.
Thank you. And pulled item seven on the Community Development Report. Any discussion on items one through six? Anyone have any comments? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on those items.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 12 ayes and one abstention.
Those items are adopted. On item seven, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. This item has been through a number of committees. This is the resolution supporting the redevelopment of the University Avenue Innovation District. I'd like to defer to Councilmember Gordon, who has an amendment on this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And you should have before you an amended motion. This has gone through a lot of process and a lot of involvement, but it turned out near the conclusions of what we thought was coming before the council that there was some confusion about what it actually meant, some confusion I probably should have been aware of, seeing that the one area of the ward was included in this area is the Glendale Townhomes, which is a treasured and highly valued area of the city. And those of you on the council may recall, in July, there was a lot of discussion about potential demolition and redevelopment there. This is an MPHA public housing project that was put in the 50s, probably has historic value, and it's something that people are very concerned about. And so they were, some people were alarmed to see that it was on the map, and they were concerned with the words redevelopment and seeing that Glendale was included. And I wanted to make crystal clear that this Innovation District designation in no way is teeing up any kind of redevelopment plan or anything for the Glendale area. That is on a separate tract. In July, we halted that process. I think the council did so rather firmly, and said, "We will consider that maybe in the future sometime when the residents and MPHA are united and come back with a completely different proposal." My understanding is they're trying to do that and trying to work together and not necessarily all that successfully. So I wanted to come back with some clarifications right in the resolution, and there's two new sections that are adding. One is in the whereas clause you should have before you that says, "Whereas the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority's Glendale Townhomes area is a highly valued asset within the district, they currently provide an innovative, effective model of stable, affordable housing within a safe, supportive community comprised primarily of refugee, immigrant, and low-income families." And then also the last resolve clause, I added something to make it very clear. Be it further resolved that this resolution does not presuppose any redevelopment in the Glendale Townhomes area, and any redevelopment or improvement plan for that area will follow a separate, open, transparent, public process that will include participation of the neighborhood association and Glendale residents. And I'll also just note that throughout the Innovation District, there's many properties and buildings. There's a treasured 4th Street with residential homes, some that were moved in there. There's a historic building on University Avenue where there's a coffee shop. And just because we're designating this district as potential to have more careful attention, more creativity from city staff, and more resources put into it to make improvements, in no way does that mean that we're saying that all of it is going to be changed or redeveloped. I think the intention is we preserve what's valuable, and we try to be careful and thoughtful about what changes are made in what areas. So hopefully, the council will understand why we had to make these last-minute adjustments to the resolution and will support this.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the motion in front of you, which is a substitute with two new provisions. Is there a second on that?
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then on item seven, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing one item forward for approval today. This is authorizing an agreement with the Center for Climate Change and Health to accept $30,000 to address public health and climate change in Minneapolis in the passage of a resolution increasing the appropriation by that amount. I'll move that one item forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to defer to Councilmember Gordon on this.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I had the opportunity of chairing the committee at the last meeting, and the committee is bringing forward three items for approval today. Two of them have to do with bomb detection security services at the TCF football stadium. The first is for Vikings football games, which is authorizing a revenue agreement for up to $23,715. And the second is for the Gopher football games, authorizing an agreement for up to $18,972, both with the University of Minnesota and for the police department to provide two bomb unit technicians and one police officer, K-9 handler, for bomb detection security services. The third item is accepting a grant of $10,980 from the Fourth Judicial Court in Hennepin County for continuation of officer and clerical support for the DWI court for one year. And I will move all three items.
Councilmember Gordon has moved Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull any of the items off or discuss them? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 10 items for your consideration this morning. The first two items are legal settlements. Item three is a gift acceptance to attend the Policy Link Equity Summit. Item number four is the Minnesota Historical Society Certified Local Government Grant Acceptance. Item five is a contract amendment with Honeywell International for HVAC maintenance at the Convention Center. Item number six is accepting a low bid for cones and influence flume rehabilitation project phase three. Item seven is bid for the pump station five-window replacement project, and that's accepting a single bid of large magnitude construction. And we find, even though it's a single bid, it was consistent with other purchases. Item eight is a bid for a revised signal system pedestrian curb ramp improvements, and that's accepting a little bit of time with sons to do that work. Madam President, I move all eight items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a very brief comment on item number three.
Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Gordon's office and staff for their very quick action on this item. This was a narrow window where we were able to position the city to potentially be able to get a really important trail connection in place, and everyone had to work very quickly to make that happen. So really grateful for that.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 10 items for your consideration this morning. The first two items are legal settlements. Item three is a gift acceptance to attend the Policy Link Equity Summit. Item number four is the Minnesota Historical Society Certified Local Government Grant Acceptance. Item five is a contract amendment with Honeywell International for HVAC maintenance at the Convention Center. Item number six is a bid for the Convention Center lighting control system upgrade project. Item number seven is IT contract amendment with Sierra Cedar for critical staff support with Comet. Item number eight is a contract with Wilder Foundation to conduct the 2016 and 2018 resident surveys. Items nine and 10 are the collective bargaining agreements. One is with the Trades Journeyman Bargaining Unit, and the other is with the Machine It's Bargaining Unit. Happy to move all 10 items of the report.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for number eight, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items from zoning and planning. Item number one is approving an interim use permit for the Roots Birth Center at 1901 44th Avenue North. Item number two is approving an interim use permit for Ramsey Excavating at 2 Dowling Avenue North. Item number three is denying two appeals for a conditional use permit, so, and then approving the conditional use permit variance and site plan reviews for 4264 Upton Avenue South, and there are three conditions. Item number four is vacation of part of an alley for Church of St. Albert the Great. And item number five was an update about the 1-4 unit residential development ordinances authored by Councilmember Palmasano last year, and we also included a staff direction to make it more difficult for folks to get around one of those updates. And staff had given us a very positive report about the outcomes of those changes. So I will move items one through five.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just speak briefly on items number three and number five. For item number three, as you know, this is a special corner in southwest Minneapolis. The neighborhood has gone through four different projects, more in design phases in less than the past four years.
to do some pretty cool things in what people know as downtown Linden Hills. On item number two, I want to thank you for honoring, after a very long zoning and planning meeting, that report from Jason Wittenberg. I think that shows good news, and good news across the city for the new single-family home projects mostly, but the dwelling, the one-to-four dwelling units, zoning changes that were made last year. I'm happy to speak with anybody individually on how that's affecting their particular community, but thank you all for hanging in there with me this past year.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.